Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jenny. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question about the River Hills amended agreement. You amended it because they changed their name, which we've talked about.
The superintendents of the consortium agreed to amend the original agreement to allow a little bit more flexibility for attendance at meetings as well as voting rights associated with those meetings as well.
And we also changed it with the fact that the AEA is actually changing their name this upcoming, I think, June 1st. It's going to be Central Rivers is the name of the AEA. And the AEA is a regional partnership that actually helps oversee and provide services for multiple districts, in fact, 53 districts and well over 60,000 students. So that's a great partnership.
Yeah, and so that was AEA 267?
It was, yes.
And that'll be Central Rivers?
Central Rivers AEA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on then to public comment.
We have one person request public comment, Eric Giddens. Welcome.
Thanks. My name's Eric Giddens. I live at 1416 Madison Street here in Cedar Falls. I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'd like to talk about the article that was in the paper yesterday, Cedar Falls considers class, sorry, more Aldridge classrooms. So the issue here is that you are considering this evening some cost-saving measures so that, if I understand the article correctly, some cost-saving measures so that you can add additional classrooms to this new school so that it will be a four-section school instead of a three-section school. So the article, as far as I know, was the first public communication about these changes to the design of the building. So it lists in the article changes in some heating and cooling units, lighting fixtures, and wall insulation. So my concern, and I sent an email to all of you yesterday evening after I'd read the article, my concern was that those appear to be things that would impact the energy efficiency of the building, particularly things like wall insulation. If you're going to cut costs on wall insulation, that would naturally seem to indicate that it would be a less energy-efficient building after you've done that. So I and others in the community are deeply concerned, I've spoken to you before, deeply concerned about energy use and its environmental impact. So that's why I'm here tonight. Mr. Nevsker responded to my email this morning, and I appreciate the response. He said, "None of the changes will affect the designed energy efficiency program that was analyzed by the White Group and by Cedar Falls Utilities. Aldridge Elementary will be just as efficient with the changes as it was originally designed to be." So I appreciate that response. I still have some questions, though. That's why I came today, because there wasn't any additional time. You're supposed to work on this tonight and consider this. So my questions are, if CFU was reconsulted, if a new energy analysis was done that will take into effect these changes, that's not clear to me just yet. So if it was done and the building will be just as energy-efficient, I'm not sure how. Changing wall insulation to reduce cost seems to me to suggest reduced energy efficiency. And then if you can do that, if you can change wall insulation and have just as energy-efficient a building, why wasn't that done to begin with? So I guess I ultimately just would like to request better, earlier, and more detailed public communication about issues like this, not just the day prior to it being considered by the board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Moving on to communications, we have a student board report, and Julie's not going to be with us, but our lovely Dr. Patty is going to report for her.
Well, I won't do justice by any means, but Julie did send a board report as an update, and she said that in Students in it, in two weeks, they will be hosting the Cedar Valley Blood Drive at the high school. On May 12th, we'll have the opportunity to donate blood and help save lives. So that's going to be on May 12th. Wednesday, May 17th, Students in is excited to host the staff appreciation breakfast. They are excited to show the staff at Cedar Falls High School how much, as students, they value the work that they do. She said for student activities currently up at the high school, right now, the All-City Orchestra Concert is taking place. On Wednesday, Cedar Falls High School will be hosting their annual all-school awards assembly during the day, and on that day, they will be recognizing all of their students and their academic and athletic achievements. Today, at the high school, they had middle school students from both Pete and Holmes come up to their high school orientation to have tours and take place with activities at the high school. And it says members of the leadership groups got the opportunity to show these upcoming students that are currently ninth graders all that Cedar Falls has to offer. They're very excited to welcome these wonderful students for next school year. So that was Julie's update.
Thank you.
You have questions? I will do my best to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other communication?
I think one, just with the public comment and the conversations. And I don't know, looking at design team, if they have anything that they want to add by any means that are in the audience, but one of the things that we've really focused in on is through our bidding process, we bid our projects. We put together our, kind of our scope of what the project is going to entail. We've always had district standards, and that comes from a lot of different facets of a job and how that job is going to be performed. And there are several components that after a job is bid, we, and it's great because of the design team and I think the collaborative nature that we have, we ask the person that receives that bid, any efficiencies, anything that we might be able to look at or review. One of the examples that have been out there is cast iron. You know, our storm drains, wherever as a district, we've always used cast iron for drainage and different sanitary sewer lines. And our design team, after asking the contractor, are there other efficiencies that we can do? He mentioned that one. Then as a district, we go through our due diligence. We call other districts that might have used some of those supplies or equipment or pieces of efficiencies that have been recommended. We asked if they've had issues, long-term maintenance concerns by using that piece of equipment, and if they say no through our research, if it's something that we think is going to add benefit, be cost-efficient and effective, but also serve the district for the next 40 to 50 to 60 years in that building without cutting efficiency, that's what we want to do. I appreciate Eric's comments, and as a district, we want to be as efficient as we possibly can. We pride ourselves on having very efficient buildings, because if we don't, as the board knows, that comes directly out of our general fund and our most important commodity is to have a very healthy general fund, because that's what pays directly for the services that our students receive through our teacher salaries or our classroom supports, our school supplies and equipment. And it's so important to have a robust general fund that's not being used to pay for inefficient heating and cooling systems. So we appreciate that greatly, and it's so important that, you know, again, we have people in the community that bring those to our attention to make sure that we're always doing what's physically best.
Do you want to wait until Aldridge?
Well, I would ask if it's okay, just if there's anything to add, I would say it now. Timing is most important, I think. Sometimes you do it in immediacy.
Sure. I'll start first. And Andy, you're correct, that before we go to go through any major project, the district has standards. And we review those to say, okay, are these what we want to apply to these projects? And so we did that, and cast iron was one of them. That's been what we have done for the last 50 years, and so we reevaluated that. The concern that we had originally, especially on the sanitary, is cleanouts. If the sewer gets plugged and you've got to clean it out later, are you going to break out the fittings? Okay? Well, the techniques have changed. Now they use more water jets than just an auger system, so that helps the fittings. So we talked to Brick's maintenance staff, talked to some contractors, and everyone felt comfortable about using the substitution. So that's how the PVC turned into a value engineering item. The other piece was the lighting. There were some light fixtures that we used in hallways to try to enhance some of the areas. There's an opportunity to go back to more of a traditional two-by-two fixture instead of a linear fixture. Same performance, it's going to make a different architectural look, but still the same performance. So that was the decision on that. Then the last piece was the energy recovery ventilators. We originally had custom, semi-custom in our specification, and we chose to value engineer or take a look at a modular standard unit. And there's four bullet points of why a custom advantages to use a custom unit. One is it has a heavier casing on it, so it doesn't have as much deflection. Two, the R-value is a little bit better. Our value on a custom is, has three inches of foam insulation, which is around R-18. The standard is around R-14, okay? Third item is the CFM, the leakage on the casing. For a custom, it's three CFM per 100 square feet. For a standard, it's six CFM per 100 square feet. And then the fourth is physical space. Can it fit in the space that a standard one can? So we evaluated all of those. Keep in mind that this unit is actually inside a semi-conditioned room. It's not on the roof. Based on that, the energy savings is really negligible between those two, because it's already in a conditioned space. And working with that White Group and CFU, the standard unit was modeled with that being had. We were trying to see, looking at the other four options or other three points, that because we're trying to make it just as efficient as we can, that's why we went to the custom. But basing, looking at the numbers, it doesn't pay for itself to go to that difference. Especially being semi-conditioned, there's really not necessarily an advantage. So what we, on the other schools, we're going back to the standard module units, because we've proven that it doesn't pay for itself. And so with North Cedar and Orchard Hill, we've just gone with modular since they're indoors as well. So those are the reasons for that.
Okay. On the insulation, where this is at is in the cavity walls and also behind the metal wool panel. And through quite a few discussions with insulation suppliers, it was indicated to us that the difference between a rigid board insulation versus the mineral wool insulation very, very similar. Once we took bids, the mason came back to us and said, "We would like to offer, we would like to use a rigid board insulation. Doesn't change the R-value at all, but it is easier for us to work with, and therefore we would like to offer a deduct for that." So no changes in R-value, stays the same, and it really became a choice between the mason and the metal wool manufacturer, what they really wanted to work with. So.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, what, go ahead, Doug.
Well, just something in the interests of communication efficiency. Do you have contact info on your website, and would it be okay if Mr. Giddens contacted you if there were any more questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Rather than having to go through the whole?
Yep. I'll give you my card, and we'll take care of it. Okay?
So in the design, we swapped out copper piping for PEX. Is that right, Mike?
Some of it. We did on the branch piping, where it was smaller piping. The mains are still copper or Schedule 40, dependent of his hydronics or plumbing. But when it was smaller piping, there was an advantage just from installation.
It saves a lot of money.
Saves some money.
And it was a school standard to do the standard copper and the Schedule 40 steel.
So from here on out, looking at sustainable materials, that PEX is probably going to be part of that school standard. I haven't talked to the folks yet, but it seems like we could make some sense.
These standards seem to be archaic.
Well...
I'm sorry, I'm just, I mean, because, I mean, when I hear copper piping, I've never heard of, you know, in commercial buildings, you know, we put, in houses, we put PEX in, I mean, and...
Yep. In residential, like commercial, that's where you see it. When you get into the larger pipes, you get into the two-inch, three-inch, four-inch mains, then PEX doesn't become viable. And that's where, that's where we will do it better on future projects on doing that. And actually, there's a project that's non-related to Cedar Falls schools, but it's also part in Cedar Falls that we actually went to the trouble and specing PEX. The installing contractor said, "Hey, do you mind if I use copper?"
As long as you don't change the price.
Exactly. And that was my, that was our comment. And he and his staff were more comfortable with copper, so go figure. But anyway, so...
So let me ask a...
Can I follow up on the other comment, too? And yes, I think it's an opportunity to follow up with some of the specs to make sure that, you know, is our standard still the best standard, number one? But number two, remember that we build buildings typically for a lifespan that's going to exceed maybe what a general construction or contractor structure might be or a personal residence might be. So typically, our buildings, we are looking for 60 to 70, sometimes more years. So it's just, we want to have those materials in there, especially since they need to be ruggedized, because we're going to have hundreds, if not thousands, of students that go through the hallways and use the plumbing, use the piping, that it's going to be rugged. Our research and our background showed that this was. Districts are using it well and very efficiently and effectively without any maintenance issues. So we feel very comfortable moving forward in that.
Yeah, I think from the copper and the PEX, I think it does, a lot of it comes down to preference. I was a little surprised on another project that they chose wanting to use copper. We've used PEX a lot for radiant floor. Years ago, you use copper, okay, well, that's kind of, we got away from that, because you started creating leaks, and PEX is a great application for that. And so now we're carrying it into the domestic world, where it's been established, like you've mentioned, in residential, like commercial. I mean, that's the norm.
No, so just forward thinking, I mean, it's good that we're discovering these things, and we've discovered these value engineering opportunities. You know, it's, I guess, you know, it's, and we're learning as we go through the process. So it's, you know, it's too bad we didn't have that all done when we, you know, set it out for bid, but I guess I'm just kind of thinking as we, we have another large building project that we intend to do sometime called a high school. And what do we do as far as, you know, making sure that, you know, our standards aren't, you know, they've been sitting there getting dusty and, you know, that they are updated with all the value engineering opportunities that we have available when we set it out to bid, so we have the best number possible.
Right. When we went through the Aldridge, or Cedar, Orchard Hill, kind of all three projects at once, we went through all the standards, and it's just chosen that, hey, let's just stick with what we know best at this point. And so now we're reevaluating those. Those are being applied, have been applied to the...
Yeah, I'm not sure you're ever going to get it perfect. And I think that's the ongoing dialogue, to be able to talk with the different contractors that receive the bids and the lowest bids. Are there things that you find that could be value engineered or greater efficiencies within the building? And I think that's what we want to do, just because a bid's been let or set. We always want to go back, review those bids with the contractors to find out what might be better or what might be more efficient. I think that's a good process. The reason we're here tonight, and again, I know this is still underneath public comment time, is really because we have had a great spring for construction, and our footers are being installed as we speak, even some wall panels are being installed as we speak out at the site. We know we had a window to be able to take advantage of this alternative for Aldridge Elementary moving to six, or four sections, six additional classrooms. And we have a really, really, I think, a strong opportunity to make that decision this evening. But the contractor had said, "We are starting to pour those footers." So we need to know quickly if this is something we want to move forward with as a district. So it's kind of a tight timeline. We've talked about this for a long time. As we go through the efficiency questions, we found that there are some opportunities to even cut down this option even less, based on some of these changes that we've made. Our pride is to be efficient as possible in all of our buildings, something that we continue to strive for and want to strive for, and know that we would not go any other way, because, again, it's going to be general fund expenditures that we don't want to expend. We want that focused on our students each and every day.
So guys, stick around, because I think we'll have conversations with you maybe, or maybe questions later on in the agenda.
I would imagine, yes.
And I just had one quick follow-up on Mike. You said the lighting, we had the same performance. Is that in terms of lighting and energy efficiency when you're talking about performance?
Yep, that's correct. The lights fixtures were just more, they're like, they're one-by-fours instead of two-by-twos, and those fixtures were a little more expensive than the standard two-by-twos, and it gave it, presented a different look to the different areas that they're trying to highlight.
Okay, thank you.
Good clarification. Thank you, Jenny. Okay, moving on to item E on the agenda, the secretary's financial report.
We're going to try something a little bit different tonight, and I was sort of strong-armed into this by a couple of my colleagues, so Janelle, if you would like to run the video, we'll see how this turns out. For the general fund for the month of March, you can see our revenue was $3,769,000 with expenditures of $2 million, excuse me, $4,293,000 for an ending fund balance of $5,445,000. The district's management fund is used primarily for insurance, liability insurance, property insurance, auto insurance, that sort of thing for expenditures. As you can see, our revenue for the month was $9,300 with expenditures of zero, which is a little unusual, but just happens to work out this last month, so for an ending balance at the end of March of $688,000. See the capital project fund for the month of March. The capital project fund is a new fund for the school district, and we need the capital project fund to record the revenue and the expenses associated with the sale of the $32 million general obligation bonds that'll be used for the construction of Aldridge Elementary as well as upgrades to both North Cedar and Orchard Hill. You can see revenue for the month, $32.27 million, and that does include the receipt of the $32 million of revenue bonds that the district sold in February. Expenditures for the month of $519,000 are directly tied to the construction of Aldridge Elementary as well as planning for both Orchard Hill and North Cedar Elementaries. And I would also note, if you'll look down here, the interest rates that we're receiving on those dollars as we're trying to earn a little bit of interest before we actually need those dollars for construction costs. Here we have the statewide one cent local option sales tax for the month of March. You'll see our revenue was $346,000 with expenditures of $29,200 that was associated with the Southdale portable classroom, some finish-up expenses with that, as well as our transfer to the debt service fund of $276,000, which is used for our 2013 as well as our refinancing bond payment. So you can see our ending fund balance of $669,450. Please note that we have a $995,000 of that's restricted as required for the 2013 bond sale, and the remaining unrestricted, the $5.674 million, will be used in association with the Aldridge, North Cedar, and Orchard Hill construction projects. Here we have the physics plant and equipment levy for the month of March. You can see our revenue was $56,000 as well as our expenditures of $50,700. Pretty quiet month, and the PEPAL fund for the month of March, ending fund balance $3226,000. On this screen, you will see the debt service report for the month of March revenue. We had a little bit of interest, $773 for the month, and there you can see that transfer from Fund 33 of the $272,000 for the upcoming debt payment on July, excuse me, June 1st. We did have one expenditure for the month of March, a little unusual, $1,000 was charged for an arbitrage report that was required, not only for the sale of the $32 million general obligation bonds that we just took, but also a review of our previous two revenue bond sales. So ending balance of $1968,000, which again, will all be used for our debt payment in June. Here is the activity fund report for the month of March. You can see that the activity fund had revenues of about $94,000 with expenditures of $133,000. Fairly typical month of March in comparison to other years with the activity fund. And you can see our ending fund balance is $571,000, very similar to where it was one year ago. Here you see our trusted agency fund for the month of March, a relatively quiet month with revenues of $25,880 and expenditures of $12,403 for an ending fund balance of $246,000. Here is our nutrition fund for the month of March. You can see our revenues were $255,000 with expenditures of $161,000. So we have a nice balance of $656,600 in the account, approximately $75,000 from the previous year. See the high school coffee shop fund for the month of March, a revenues of $627,000, expenditures of $568,000, nice balance of $8,094 for the month. Here is the River Hills Consortium report for the month of March. You can see we had revenues of $45,000 as tuition was received from one member school, and expenditures out of $161,000, so it leaves an ending fund balance of zero. Just as a reminder, the River Hills School is located in the Cedar Falls School District, but it is a consortium of 30 different schools across northeast and central Iowa, and as such, Cedar Falls is the financial fiscal agent for the River Hills Consortium program. I hope you've enjoyed our way of presenting the financial reports for the month of March. Special thank-out to Janelle and Brian for all their help in producing and directing our little video this evening. And with that, I would entertain any questions from the board.
We really wanted a T-Rex in the back room.
I will say this, it is a really different watching yourself on television.
If you could add the weekly forecast right there.
I was going to say, where's the extended forecast? I have a new appreciation for all the folks that work at KWWL. I will say that as well. Again, Brian and Janelle, thank you so very, very much. I realize that was quite a bit of work behind the scenes that I'm not even aware of how they put this thing together, and very appreciative of that. And with that, I would entertain any questions that the board would have about the financials for the month of March.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for Doug? Hearing none, we'll place the financial report on file for audit. Thank you. All right, moving on to item F on the agenda, our informational report.
Yes, very excited to have our informational report this evening on our Teacher Leadership and Compensation Grant and an update regarding that program. So very excited. Christine and Katie are here, but we also have other representatives that will probably step forward here in a bit, so...
We do, yeah. We're excited to be here. We really have a lot to celebrate with where we've gone since we've added our instructional coaches to the mix. So I'm going to start off here and make sure this is working here. I just am going to flash through some faces here that I have shared maybe at the board retreat, but I can't see enough positive things about these individuals and how hard-working they are. And we've got one of them in the room here, too, and I missed Katie. Been fantastic to have them in each of our buildings, and then we've got our wonderful district positions, too, with Megan Trestmer, just kind of a bigger oversight to things happening, and Kenton Swartley has been a tremendous asset as well. There we go. So I just wanted to start with this. This is a really familiar thing. You've probably seen this presented dozens of times by now. It's about our PLC process, and it's our four critical questions. And the thing that I think we have really, really learned through this process of having instructional coaches is that we've gone so much deeper than just those four questions. When I say that, what I really mean is that we're not only addressing the four basic questions, but we now are really getting at ways to improve our instructional practices, and we're also, more importantly, getting at how are we increasing our efforts as a district and really working on our collective efficacy to get better. So we're really thinking about that kid-by-kid, skill-by-skill thing with the help of our coaches in our mix now. We knew we couldn't have everybody here tonight, so we just wanted to get some input from everybody, though. So we got some fantastic quotes, and so these are some tidbits basically from... And so these are some tidbits, basically, from the coaches, based on what some teachers have shared with them. And they're really, really kind of integral to launch us into what else we have to share today. So that first one in red is, "We're able to look at theory and put it into practice with support within the classroom." It's not like traditional professional development with a one-shot event, or even a PLC weekly meeting. The rest of the context of that was the fact that the coaches were actually coming to those PLC meetings and really helping out, and then also in the classrooms. The next one is, "With coaching, we're building a culture of learning." And that's, I think, kind of where we came up with our title. It's like, wow, we've really got that ongoing culture of learning. It's not just those one-shot deals of PD. So we're all learners. And then the last one I'll mention here is, "Our staff has benefited from learning from each other." And what we're really seeing is people are wanting to get into each other's classrooms, and our coaches are also sharing great stories after being in each other's classrooms, too. Another thing, I'm kind of the repeat person, but this is very applicable. I shared this, too, a few months ago, when we talked about the workshop model implementation. And it's great that we have theory and demonstration and practice when we have professional learning. But, you know, when you add that coaching in, it makes such a tremendous impact, actually, in the classroom, so much more. We don't have hard data on that just yet, but we're really seeing that perception data right now, that that's really, really happening. I'm going to let Katie talk just a little bit.
To go along with what we talked about with coaching in the classroom, and this is kind of like, what do coaches do? So we talk about being in there, but there's not just a one kind of thing that every coach does with every teacher. Here's one example of ways that teachers know what is available to them through the instructional coaches. We did it in the form of a menu, where the appetizers would be things like gathering resources, needing to do some networking with other teachers, covering the class so that they can go see another teacher in action. Kind of like your quick things that the instructional coaches can help with. And then you can get into your entrees, which are a lot, like meteor, they're a lot, you dig a little bit deeper. And so thinking about co-planning, so that you're planning with another teacher, co-teaching, that you're teaching right alongside of each other, observing with each other, looking at data together. So doing a lot of, not only are we presenting our information as a co-team, but that we're looking at the data from that as well. Along with that is the desserts at the end. So there's some other types of things that you could look at. So, as coaches, we spend a lot of time on professional learning, and how do we get that to all of our teachers, along with doing some brainstorming? Sometimes you just need like, "Oh, I have an idea, but I don't know what the best thing is." So we don't always have time in our day to do that with our colleagues. So the coach is a really great resource in that regard, too. Along with doing these things, we're really reflecting our mission statement, because our mission statement talks a lot about, thank you, educating every student to be lifelong learners. And we're reflecting that with our teachers, that our teachers are lifelong learners, as well as our students. And through the coaching process, we're really modeling that for our district and for our students as well. These are two quotes that we had from some teachers. "I love the confidence you have in me. I'm always truly appreciative of any advice you can give me to improve in any way. Thanks for believing in me." Another one was, "When I work with you, I'm a better teacher. It's good when you're in my room. It holds me accountable. I'm glad you had to keep improving." So those are just two, kind of, the perspective of some of the teachers, that, how instructional coaches impact their everyday. Once again, though, as great as it is to see the impact on teachers, we're really here to show an impact on student learning. And so every time that we have a coaching cycle, every time that we're talking with teachers about best instructional practices, we're really looking at, how does this affect our kids? How does this improve our student learning? How does this improve our student achievement? And these are the kinds of questions that we think through every time that we're in a coaching cycle. So, what will this, how will this impact my students? What evidence do we, will we have and collect to ensure that our instructional practices are the right instructional practices for our students? So it's really focused on data and knowing that we are making a difference. Like Christine said, we don't have that in our hands yet, as we're just implementing the process, but a lot of the qualitative, or quantitative, sorry, qualitative, the qualitative pieces that we're getting are really showing that we're having a lot of impact in the Here's some examples of that, too, a couple of quotes that teachers have said. "I knew, I thought I knew my readers, but guided reading with my coach has brought my understanding to a whole new level. Coaching has helped me to identify student strengths. Modeling and debriefing with my coach has accelerated student learning." And so those are just a few of the things that teachers have said that have made a difference in their day-to-day practice in the work with instructional coaches as well. Along with this, we, as coaches, I feel, have really gained a lot, professionally and personally, through having this role in our district. It has been a tremendous amount of learning for us as coaches. And we are, we are lucky to have a two-hour PLC that we meet with every week to really deepen our knowledge of what our teachers need and what our students need. And that's been really invaluable. We also see that, you know, what I see in one classroom happening, I can go tell another, "Oh, this is so great. You need to come see what's happening in this classroom." And we really have, working on that collaborative ethic, the teacher collective efficacy within our district, too. Another big focus has been coaching and technology. And so we are going to be talking about, you know, it's not just that I'm doing technology with the new and shiny thing that just came out, but that we're ramping our instruction because of technology, and focusing on those three, or those four Cs, communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking, and how technology can enhance our instruction in the classrooms as well.
We're really lucky to have some fantastic coaches that really focus in on the technology part of this. And we have Kenton here tonight, and he's going to share some stuff with us. And if you happen to ever, whoops, I guess I went the wrong way, sorry about that. Here we go. If you ever follow the CF Coaches on Twitter, you're going to see some amazing things in action. There's some videos and pictures and everything, too. We really see that the coaches customize the learning for the teachers. They may be more of a model at first, but we've seen so much independence with teachers now taking off, and it's fantastic. And this ultimately is impacting those kids, and they love it. So I really encourage you to check out that Twitter feed, and that's just kind of my segue to the really, really tough tonight. It gets you into the high school, Kenton Ingles, and he is our technology coach from the high school.
Thanks, that was a good segue. Segways are hard. Hi, everybody. I'm Kenton Ingles. I am the, as she said, the high school instructional technology coach. There's a few others, so I am representing all instructional technology coaches. There's two at the elementary, and there's myself at the high school, and then another that goes between the junior highs. And what our awesome instructional technology coordinator is passing out to you are the virtual reality goggles, like you see in those Samsung commercials. I don't think you'll cry, although if you did, you know, it's on record, so. Another thing I wanted to say is, Mr. Neffsker, I really enjoyed your green screen presentation. And then the reason I bring that up is because I'm going to show you this awesome, shiny new tool that we have at our disposal here, and that all the students and all the teachers are very grateful for. We have a checkout that is booked until the end of the year. Every day is unavailable now. And so I'm really pumped about this tool, but it's just one of a series of tools I feel fortunate enough to use. And really, the tool just proves why we do what we do, and why, and the answer to that is, is student learning, as she said, because we believe that student learning exists when you go to the, push the limits of your experiences. When you, when you get access to an experience that you otherwise wouldn't, that's where student learning can really blossom. And that's what we believe. And so this is just one tool. Another great tool is the green screen. I have those scheduled for later, as well as the other coaches do throughout the rest of the year. And so it's not a, technology at Cedar Falls is not just, here you go, like we kind of gave you, but it is more of a experience that's built into ways in which I cannot explain in the time I have. But for right now, I'd like to show you, so if you put them up to your head, it should have you underwater. And this is underwater at the Galapagos Islands. And what's very exciting about this tool is, this is part of the Google Expeditions app. You can get it on your phone, doesn't matter which kind of phone you have. And these are 360 images, so if you spin around, you, the image will change with you. Now, we believe eventually the technology will be so that you can stand up and walk, and you can navigate in these places, but for right now, these are stationary. However, on this iPad in front of me, I have some instructions. So as the instructor, either it's myself or a classroom teacher, it has the instructions right here, so I can read off some facts. For example, did you know, between five to 10 million years ago, the peaks of underwater Galapagos volcanoes first appeared above water? Facts like that. And then when I'm done with this image, I can go to the next one. I think you'll all appreciate this.
No.
It's a school of fish. I have to say, this was on the CF Instructional Coaches Twitter, but the reaction you get, the reaction kids give, especially elementary students, is really one that I think everyone needs to see. The third grader puts these on, the audible gasps are kind of worth all the effort. And then, of course, I can drop an arrow. I realize this probably doesn't make for good television, but I can drop an arrow, and then it can show people where to go. So as far as an educational tool, this one is really tops. We're currently looking into other ways that we can use, basically, it's an iPod inside these plastic goggles here. They look like the Viewmasters of old. I know by my face, you probably don't think I know what one of those is. But I do. I do. And so, as I said, I can take you through, there's several images on here. This app also includes, what I'm excited for, since I work at the high schools, it includes visits to college campuses. I know the Iowa schools are working on getting theirs uploaded to the Google program, but already in Wisconsin and Minnesota, as well as the Ivy Leagues are on here. There's also career expeditions, so those that are interested in civil engineering, in chemistry, you can see what those people do, because you put on the goggles and you're in their office space. So for the secondary students, I'm very excited about that. So it's not just cool places, although this would be a place I'd love to visit. With that, with that said, you can keep looking, but I'd just like to conclude that I feel really honored to have the time in front of you to present this to the board. I'm really excited to have been selected, and it's been an awesome first year, and I'm already really excited about the possibilities that this has for years to come. So I guess I want to express my gratitude, and I fervently believe in its, its power as an educational tool, being an instructional technology coach. So, yeah, thank you all for your time.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could keep these, right?
Oh, oh. Are the images always static, or do they have video that you can go in there?
It's a great question. Do I answer? Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I should have asked her questions, that would have been polite. Yes, there are videos. The New York Times offers a news video app where you're, you can get basically your daily news briefings. And YouTube has thousands of videos now that are 360, that are like that. The reason why we chose this app the way it was, was the control with the iPad, to be able to push all that out into the goggles. If you do the videos, those are more on an individual basis that you have to control as a student, which many can do, but yeah. Thanks, Ash. Are there other questions, or?
I think one of the neat aspects, and I'm not sure if Kent knows this or not, but we, we have a, kind of, a very small component in our budget that's kind of research and development for technology. And I believe Mr. Andrew just purchased a 360-degree camera, so we can start creating our own Google expeditions or expeditions, but that also includes video. So it's going to be really nice, especially as I think some of our building projects, some of the other building processes continue to help, maybe.
Our budget presentation in two weeks.
Budget presentation in two weeks, 3D VR, yes. But just some opportunities, really, to look at not only maybe some of our structures and learning and opportunities for students, but how it's done across other areas with that technology. It's really amazing.
Yeah, and that also gets at the higher levels of learning, which is creating. It's one thing to be a consumer, as you know, and learn that way, watch a video or listen to a lecture, but you know that the higher levels of learning happen when you create something. And so the ability to do that with a 360 camera, which I'm really excited about, and one application is the new buildings, that's very exciting, but there's probably, you know, thousands we haven't thought of.
So this is applied right now, obviously, the example you showed us was science-type of example.
Yeah.
Right? So what subjects, I mean, I can think of like, engineering, this would be, you know, very useful for design of.
So, a popular one, let's say, was in our child development class, there's the process of childbirth, so we did that one. That's more of a digital rendering.
I was going to say, that's.
That's good.
No, go figure, no one volunteered, you know, for their. Anyway, another one is foreign language. There's many, you know, exotic places like Paris that you can visit, Barcelona, it was just recently. Students in the elementary schools I know have been studying dinosaurs, they have that one, and also biomes, it's like rainforests and applications that way. And then some textbook companies are putting these together, so there's a lot of history examples that come about. You can go to the Battle of Gettysburg, and it takes you around, and it shows you historic images that way. So, yeah, I was, I was kind of surprised at how wide it reached.
Some of the other things, too, there's, there's a nice resource that's out there, too, where you can take an expedition, let's say, on, on a city, and they've looked at architecture and different things, but then that same expedition, they might take and use within the math classes, they're looking for different shapes or angles, or again, those architectures, different structures. So some of those can be used a number of different ways. It lends itself, I think, right now, for science, social studies, some of those exploration pieces at the secondary level, but it also is hitting some things within math and some of the other resources, too.
Can you just give us a brief bullet point? I know this is not the only technology that you've purchased and are using in the classrooms. Can you just tell us, and everybody at home, too, some of those other things that we've, we have access to?
Yeah, so I think we should tag-team this, because I'll probably forget some. So besides the expeditions, we have the green screen, which you saw today. We also have 3D printers that have been used to much success. We have, at the elementary level, you might have to help me, but we have.
Those got Sphero's, Cotopillars, Osmos.
Ozobots.
Ozobots.
He's, what, and those help us do what?
Yeah, so, so the Sphero robot is one that, which you can program with different languages. There's, from the very basic, to basically putting play buttons on the screen, to writing code. Ozobots are for younger students that you can program as well. They program based on color, so as it reads a color, it tells the robot what to do. These are small, you know, sphere robots.
Cotopillars are used with preschool, kindergarten age, and they're working with sequencing and controlling the caterpillar in through the different commands, what to do and how to get it from one place to another. The Sphero's are also used in conjunction, we have a couple drones, small drones, too, that are used in conjunction with, again, coding, logical thinking, with that, so.
Yeah, I would say, the theme is kind of an intro to computer science, is the theme for some of those. And for others, it's exploring and creating.
Yeah, the green screens are really being used across different subject matter as well, as with the expeditions, seeing them from kindergarten up through 12th grade. And, and, you know, sometimes you wonder about the technology being as engaging for, for your high school kids as they are for the first graders. They might not hoot and holler as they're looking at penguins quite as much, but, but they do, they are very engaged in going through, and had some kids that, as I was sitting in on a class that Kenton had done, too, they're like, "Wow, that's really great. This is so much better than just reading about it and things, and so now I really understand what this occupation does." And so that was, that was good.
Well, I want to thank all of you, Kenton, Katie, Brian, and, excuse me, I'm going to cough here. Christine.
I'm going to ask one quick question for you. So you talked a little about coding. I know, I know with our CAPS, one of our CAPS strand, we're hitting that computer science, where we're looking at some of our junior high offerings. So how close are we getting to having every grade level having a touch of coding, so that we can, you know, try and fill that need of programmers, because that's such a great area for students to study and probably have guaranteed jobs when they get out of school, so.
Absolutely. I think we're well on our way. I mean, we've had conversations for the last three years, you know, the high school is going to have a course that they're going to be able to offer, and they have a couple, two, three sections of it. That course eventually will come down. We've got some pieces at the junior high that are coming into, into play, and as we begin to do the science. And as we begin to do the science adoption of the elementary, we're going to also pull in computer science in with the elementary. So I'm hoping within the next couple of years, we can have a pretty solid thread from kindergarten through 12th grade as a release to computer science. So there's things that are happening all over the district and it happens in pockets. And, and our goal is to try to make it systemic so that every student has the same opportunity and exposure to those different things. And whether it's formal curriculum or even opportunity in through the maker spaces or after-school programs, or maybe some of the opportunities within tighter time and power hour as well over the next couple of years, there'll be different avenues and outlets for them to be able to kind of hit some of those passions that they, they might not have been able to do before.
And it's incredible watching even the preschool students, the kindergarten students that are working on those coding skills, one of the four Cs of critical thinking, as they, they work on with those technologies. It is truly amazing.
That'll be great. I mean, you know, my generation, I think we have an idea of what, who's, who's a potential computer programmer. And so I think some of us maybe don't encourage our kids to do that because we think it has to be this kind of student. So I'm glad that you guys are taking that from us and
Yeah. The other part too is computer science. If we talked about that and tried to, you know, what are words that mean to you, we'd probably end up with 12 different definitions of what that is. And so as kids get into it, it goes much beyond coding, but there's, there's lots of different opportunities. And then as that translates into different occupations and potential opportunities for post-secondary, again, exposure and giving kids the opportunities is the end goal.
Good questions, good discussion. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
And just on, so this is funded through PEPL, right?
Yes. Our technology is
Correct.
Yep. And again, our cornerstone of technology really is our Chromebooks, our one-to-one model, our iPads that we have for basically all of our students K through 12. And these are a lot of kind of our maker kits, our traveling kits that are check-out in nature, again, targeted for student learning in each of those different areas. So it's really exciting. Paid for out of PEPL. We have a small instructional support levy budget too, that's small to really target. Other possibilities to make sure we continue to stay on that, the forefront of using technology effectively for student learning in the classroom. And that's where the 360 camera comes from and some other avenues that our instructional coaches, our Biddle teams, as well as Mr. Andrew, really work hard on to stay up
Now, just so the community knows, this is, this is part of what the PEPL helps fund and from an educational
And then just as a reminder, our coaches are funded through
General fund.
Yeah, it's our Teacher Leadership and Compensation Grant that comes from the state and it's a grant as a one-time grant, but then it goes into our funding formula for our overall funding process from the state of Iowa. So it's ongoing from here on out.
Right.
Thank you.
Good questions. Okay, moving on to item G on the agenda, the proposed list of 2017 graduates.
One of the, I think, most important milestones that we can have every year is the school board, is the school district, is our graduation and our proposed list of graduates. So our recommendation is that we approve the proposed list of 2017 graduates that will walk across our stage here in the next few weeks.
All right, do I have a motion to approve that list?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School Board of Education approve awarding the diplomas for the graduating class of 2017 contingent upon satisfactory completion of graduation requirements as attested to by the high school principal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item H, approval of and acceptance of six classroom addition and change orders for Aldridge Elementary. Doug.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll bring the power point up and we'll start with this real quick. Briefly go through the change for alternate one. This is the current plan that the board approved when they accepted the bids for the project. It is a three-section building. You'll notice if you look in the upper left-hand corner in that wing, there's three classrooms and there's meeting space and, and a commons area. So if, and if we switch to the next slide, now you'll see that there would be the addition of those six classrooms to turn the building from a three-section to a four-section facility. A summary of that, the original bid amount for that six classroom addition was $659,000 and we briefly touched on some of this before. By changing the construction standards, and just to give a little bit more background on that, those standards were established when the school district constructed Cedar Heights Elementary back in 2000. And we pretty much had stuck with those standards. It's like the old tried and true thing, it works really well. But in conversations with the design team and other school districts and builders that have used the new types of systems, they found them to work very well. And so we don't want to spend dollars that we don't need to, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're providing a facility that, that will last for decades. And so you can see then the other revisions we have in construction, design and materials, so you take those two deducts off, it brings those six classrooms down to $307,004. The other thing that we want, I want to remind the board is that we did accept the alternate number for the second reinjection well. That's sort of a placeholder. We typically, in the other projects that we've done in the past where we've, where we've had this type of a system, we've accepted the alternate for the reinjection well, but we've not needed it. And early indications are that we will probably not need it in this project as well. Now, again, there's no guarantee until we get to the point where they pump and hook everything up to make sure that it's adequate. But if history follows itself, we would be able to deduct an additional $175,000 off because we would not need that second well. So that would bring the price down to approximately $132,000 or about $27.30 per square foot for those six classroom addition. At this point, I think if the board has any questions, we have our design team with us tonight and you can fire away.
Doug, just to clarify from our earlier discussion, will these become our new district standards?
That would be our, that would be our intent, that these are going to become our new district standards. And, and like I said, it's, they were established in 2000 when Cedar Heights was constructed. They've, they've served us well. Some of the items that we're going to be switching to were available in 2000, but we maybe sort of felt that then, visiting with Rick Gerstman and the design team folks, that maybe at that time, the district wanted to take a little bit more of a cautious approach on some of these things. Now, 17 years later, we have found that those to be reliable construction practices and materials and, and we're more willing to move forward with that.
And I think there's a caveat to that because some of these changes in here aren't necessarily going to be district standards. It could be at that time, that contractor's opinion that this might be a better product that he is, he or she is used to using. So similar to what Mike had talked about, I think Mike, it might have been, Dan, sorry, that talked about the insulation. We, we still will have the same R-value factors. We might spec out a certain insulation within the building, but a contractor could come back and say, well, we are used to this type. We believe we can install it much less expensive. We would recommend a change order for a deduct to use this. But PEX tubing, some of the PVC piping instead of cast iron certainly are going to be newer district standards as we move forward.
Just as we look at these costs, can you give us a reminder of when we need to put a portable in, how much that costs, just to, to show?
Well, well, I'm doing this from memory, but it was $101,000 if my memory serves me correctly, to put the foundation in, hook the, hook the utilities up and put the ramps and sidewalks in place for the, for the portable at Southdale. And that does not include the cost of the portable itself. The district did, did choose to purchase the portable because it was less expensive in the long run, based on the number of years we felt we were going to need the unit. And I believe it was about $150,000 for the portable. Don't hold me to that number, but I believe that's, that's fairly accurate. And so the payback just on the purchase of the unit versus buying, leasing it was in the third year. And we already have plans for this portable at Southdale. It'll be moving to one of the secondary buildings this summer of 2018.
And we also estimate, as kind of the caveat to the question, that if we are looking at an addition to any building per room, standard-sized classroom usually typically costs about $250,000 to $300,000. So obviously this is extremely efficient use of, of funding and we know that it's never going to be less expensive than right now.
And can we compare the square foot cost of, that you showed us doing there versus what the square foot cost is for the building in general?
This is about a
Approximately.
A typical construct
The building cost overall is $210,000
Mm-hmm.
Square foot.
So 1/6, 1/7 the cost.
The $210,000 per square foot versus less than 30 is pretty significant.
And if we completed the three, the three-section building and then we came back five years later, so I want to ask you to project increasing costs over five years, but, but just today, what, what, what we know about, what would it cost if we completed the building as a three-section and then we decided to put that fourth section on?
1.5 to 1.8 million, the 300,000 times six classrooms roughly.
So in other words, it's fiscally irresponsible not to do this right now.
And I think that's a very accurate statement.
Yeah.
And our capacity goes from what to what, as a reminder?
Goes from 525 up to around 625, 640 students roughly. And again, that's trying to maximize all the classroom spaces to the highest level.
And that's similar to what other building do we have, the buildings we have?
Very similar to what Hanson currently is at, what Southdale is currently at, at 625. 650.
And I know personally experiencing Lincoln, I think that was initially intended to be a three-section, correct? And I don't know that there are very many three-section classes left at Lincoln. And that was not that long ago.
Correct.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approved Aldridge Elementary School alternate number one for the construction of six additional classrooms and approved change orders as described for a net total additional cost of $307,410 and 10 cents and direct the board secretary to sign all change order documents as necessary.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, the timeliness of this is important as the project has really moved quickly in the, in the last several weeks.
You know, Andy, I should have asked one question. So where are we getting, where is that funding coming from? Those additional classrooms? I mean, do we know that?
I would say, you know, the, the intent is out of the bond dollars, but it could also come out of the PEPL dollars. So we're, we're trying to review and make sure that the, the cash flows are balanced correctly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to the review and discussion of the North Cedar Elementary School project bids. Doug?
I think I'll turn it over and let Dr. Patty start this one.
Yes, within your packet, you'll see that we have a, a letter that talks about the North Cedar Elementary School project. We did receive four bids for that project. The base ranges were from 9.65 million to 11.37 million. The, the apparent low though is still over our budgetary amount, about $2.5 million over what we set, the balance in the budget that we had when we set this budget two years ago. I think that's for, for multiple reasons. We'll have a design team talk or help answer questions here in a bit. But number one, we, we know we had a little bit of scope creep in this. We came through with a, a plan that we had roughly two years ago with the bond when we moved solely to the elementary components within that. There were some needs identified, not in the original plan, in the original documentation, when we put together that plan for costing purposes. There are also some expansion of some special needs rooms, rooms that we know needed to grow in scope as we looked at programming needs, as we looked at some of the needs of our students specifically, that might have some, some severe challenges in, in special needs. One of the biggest factors that we continued to have dialogue about after bids were received was the length of the project. We had a pretty significant phasing approach for this project. It was over three years, as the board well knows. And there was a very large premium that was added to that phasing approach over that three-year period. Our, our hope was to really have a phased approach that would take smaller sections of the building with the remodeling, with the teardowns, with the additions. But we now know that as we go into the future, we're going to have to condense down that phasing period into a much shorter timeframe because as you look out two years, three years as a contractor, the unknowns of cost of materials, the cost of labor, and also segmenting your workforce into maybe a smaller job here than a smaller job here is a challenge.
Wait, can you, so is this premium something that the contractor then puts in their bid?
It does. It's the unknown, so it's an additional cost because they're not sure what the cost of girders might be two years down the road when, when that's needed for the third or fourth phase of the project.
So the contractor would say to us, because you're telling us three years, we're going to charge you an extra X amount of money?
Correct. Which is usually built into the bid as kind of a larger escalator clause.
Thank you.
We also have, as we've worked on this, realized construction material over the last two years have gone up pretty significantly. And that's been a challenge for us as we've looked at the original bid to where we're at now. And I would say probably one of the greatest challenges as we've looked at this, this project is just the site limitations and, and the fact that we, we know because of the phasing and, and the site, it's a, a premium that some of our bidders put on to say we, we're going to put in some extra costs associated with the dynamics of the site. And we think there's ways that we can continue to work around that. We know that this isn't an isolated incident or situation to Cedar Falls. In the last two, two to three months, we've had several different districts across the state that have rejected bids, which is going to be our recommendation this evening, to come back to review and to continue to look at different options for North Cedar to, to ensure that we are, A, providing the educational programming, keeping the focus on excellence and, and providing a facility that's going to be utilized for 40 to 50 years down the road. Some of the other districts that we know that have rejected bids recently, Sioux City was over budget, as well as Atuma and Muscatine and North Polk. So we've seen this now happen in many other districts. And then finally, throughout our design development with staff and teachers, we, we certainly have focused on educational programming and the changes that we know we are able to make and can make in this, this building, especially with timing and, and phasing potentially. We, we know the educational program will be at high levels of excellence and will continue to focus on what we provide for all of our students across our district. So I think that's important. So again, our recommendation is that we reject the bids by Iowa code, that's what we have to do. Then we'll come back, we will continue to revise and work on options and opportunities. But certainly we know within our bond language, our focus to have a tremendous facility in North Cedar is stalwart and will continue to always be there.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education reject all bids for the North Cedar Elementary School project and direct the administration and design team to bring a revised construction plan to the Board of Education.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. What kind of questions or comments does, does the board have?
I have a question about, so the list of bidders on the project are pretty much kind of the standard ones that we always get. And so they all bid higher than we want to. And I go to the Iowa Association of School Board meetings and it seems like there's like dozens of contractors we never hear from. And could they have the impression that it's not even a bot worth them bothering bidding because we have our set? Or is there a way we can expand the pool of bidders to make the price go down?
I'll start with that one. There was a change in the law a couple of years, a year ago about how we have to post bids. And we now post those on Iowa Builders Group website, Master Builders, excuse me. And so it's available to anybody who's a master builder in Iowa to review those specifications. And it's changed quite a bit from what it was just a couple of years ago. And so we are getting a much larger reach.
But if they're, if the common wisdom is don't even bother putting it together for Cedar Falls because they have their set?
And I don't think that's the case at all. What we're finding though, across the state, is there's a high level of competition right now. There's a lot of construction and building occurring, especially around Des Moines, around Iowa City. Iowa City, here in this region, and it seems like there's, I think, maybe a lack of motivation necessarily to travel significant distances across the state. So I don't think there's, and Dan might be able to answer that talking with contractors, but I don't think there's a detractor out there to bid locally.
No, I don't believe so. I think there's just a lot of work out there. If you look at the Aldrich bids, we had Larson and Woodruff were the only two in common, Peters and Cardinal, which are local, did not bid Aldrich. But Garland and, was it Myron? No.
That was two months ago. I apologize.
I should have brought that with me. But, you know, as Doug indicated, we're sending it out to a lot of people that are on our lists that we make aware of these projects. And it's also put through Rapids Reproduction. They have, they're kind of a plan house. And anybody that signed up with them gets notification of the project. And we also tell them, we know that these people would be interested, have shown interest in the past, so let's just make sure that they're aware of it. So we put it out to a lot of people.
I mean, you see all these people who are giving me pens and flash drives and look hungry, so where are they?
I can't tell you.
But is it not true that we have to accept the low bid? So if they would want to come in and put the low bid in, they'd get the job, but to have to travel across the state with all of your equipment?
They may well feel that it's not in their best interest. If they have local, their own local work to do, it may not be in their best interest.
One of the things too, and again, this is something that we know by rejecting these bids and looking into the future, timing was a challenge for us and, you know, there could have been some bidders out there across the state that might have bid, but we had some work that was planned to be done this summer at North Cedar. Obviously, that's not going to be accomplished now. It's going to have a little bit more flexible of a start time as we look at rebidding this into maybe a more concise process. But it could be, you know, again, into the future where a contractor might say, I don't have that work at that time. We, I think the original intent was to bid this about a month ago with some work. Things got, continued to be moved around as we looked at design development. And if you look at a lot of the construction going on across the region, people are busy. And that's a good thing. It's tremendous that our region is growing and there's a lot of work occurring. But really, one of the things, and I should have known better, is that as we look to the future, bidding it now for work to begin, you know, the mid-June, I think was a detriment to some people. And I think some people didn't potentially bid because of that.
So what's the timeline? What do you think the timeline might be?
I would say we need to continue to work with that. We need to have some dialogue with multiple people. I would say hopefully, within the next two weeks to four weeks, at least we'll have a pretty firm direction and kind of go from there. We know that we have two projects right now, North Cedar and Orchard Hill. If this is a trend line that's going to continue with potential cost per square foot and some of the other challenges, then we need to come back and really look at both projects to make sure that the scope is in the right framework because that's important for us. We know what our budget is. We know what's important within the priorities, and that's all focused on student learning and the spaces that are going to be really inhibit strong student learning opportunities. So we really are focused on programmatically what we need to have in the building, but also being as cognizant of the funding and the budget we have.
Correct.
So when you put it out for bid again, it won't necessarily mean there will be a lot of changes to the design this first time?
My guess is there will probably be changes in design. We'll work with people and through that process. There are some things that we believe that we can probably do effectively as far as the scope and the timing of the project, which again, which was a high premium. But that's going to be really encapsulated, I think, into ensuring that we have the right reductions without impacting the programmatic needs. But there are some space allocations as we look at the overall plan, working with, again, programmatically what is needed education in that structure. How do we make sure that that's done well?
Maximizing the usage of spaces we have available.
That's a good way to put it. Thank you.
Well, and I know you talked about the phasing. So is the phasing, I mean, it seemed like we were going to do it in three phases. And are you going to try, did I hear you say that you were going to try to shorten that up if possible?
I think all options are on the table, including trying to cut those phases down to where it was over about 30 to 32 months. And again, that premium that people will charge for that is pretty extensive, down to potentially 20 months.
Make it to 24 maximum.
Or less.
And we're looking at various ways to accomplish that, working with the school itself. And how do we disrupt as little as possible, but still get the contractor in there to be able to do enough work so that it's worth him being there?
Sure.
And with that, it sounds like that you're still hoping to be finished about the same time then?
I think that would be the intent. Yes, the intent would still to have the same completion timelines that we talked about, which was August of 19 for both this building and Orchard Hill. So it really comes down to balance that out to ensure that it's done much more condensed without having that challenge and difficulty of being extended out.
So Dan, when you got, when you opened the bid, you know, you have your initial kind of estimates of what you're expecting for costs. So can you kind of share with us, within that bid, where did you see the increases significantly and why did those, why was there a discrepancy between our expectation and the bid?
I don't think I saw any huge variation. Obviously, it was more. But on a per-section cost breakdown, it was all kind of the same increase. There wasn't one that came in higher than the other, shall we say. It was all just kind of one, everything lumped together, just increased.
So across the board, almost everything took a 30% hike?
Yep.
It came in about $230 per square foot. Obviously, Aldrich came in about 210. This was the premium that, it was actually about 240, I guess, per square foot, about $30 higher than what we anticipated it'd come in at. And again, I think most of that was due to the premium.
The site and, you know, there is no place whatsoever to lay anything down, other than down in the playground. So they're having to haul materials, actually considerable distance. If you go out to Aldrich and see how spread out they are out there, just what it's taking to build that project, it takes a lot of space for the equipment and materials to be laid down. The site itself is, you know, hilly. The south side, two classrooms basically has to be built. You're down here with your equipment, you're up here building, building the walls. So there's just a lot of things going on throughout the site.
We've talked with the two lowest bidders contractors to, again, get ideas, just as we talked about with the efficiencies of the previous work at Aldrich to find out what can be done. And again, I think the biggest comment that's come back is-
Time and site.
Timing on site.
This would be the first project that we have had to reject bids on since we've had local option tax money. And we've all known that adding onto a building is tough. And that student's safety as well as working around students is planned.
Everything we did when we were looking at the phasing was how do we minimize the disruption, inconvenience to the students and the teachers? And maybe we overreached a little bit with that, but that was the driving factor, make sure everybody's safe as we go through this.
Which will be the highest priority for us as we go through this. But again, as we look at other options as far as phasing and/or construction remodeling, we will-
Continue that.
Yes.
Any other?
Yep. So when we talk about reallocating, redefining spaces, we made certain promises, for example, to get rid of the concept of the gym area and all that. Do you believe we will be able to allocate space in such a way that we do keep our promises?
Oh, definitely. Yes. You know, programmatically, what we want to do, and again, it's some of the scope expansion, maker spaces. We want to ensure that every single building has a maker space and ability to have those areas to cultivate some of the discussion that we just had previously. So that was added on to this project and we have to be able to maintain that. You know, are there other spaces where we can become much more dual purpose? And, you know, in Southdale, we have two music suites and music rooms. Is there a way that we can use those spaces concurrently within a building that has a capacity of 325 students because they won't be fully utilized like they might be in a building that has four sections? And those are areas that we really are focused in on to make sure that we, A, have the equity necessary, but also meet the programmatic needs of each specific building that might be unique to that building. It's imperative that we have the equal opportunities for all kids regardless of what building you go into.
And I don't think people really care what their pipes are made out of.
No.
But they care about the promises that we made.
With Mike in the room, we want to say, yes, we do.
25 years, we'd care about that.
Yeah. Again, ex tubing versus copper tubing versus-
I'm saying I'm not going to have a single constituent say to me, you promised us copper tubing.
No. And we know that there's some options within some of the roofing, the expansion of the classrooms that we're adding to the south side at North Cedar to hopefully be able to review that and make sure that those programmatically are what we need and fit the need, but also some potential options to be able to explore there. So this is obviously a position that we didn't want to be in, but it's a position we are in and certainly not unique to Cedar Falls, but certainly an opportunity to continue to define dialogue and continue to focus on what we want to do for our students as we look at this project and the next project with Orchard Hill and hopefully our future project of a high school.
Right.
We will stay within the budget, though, that we had initially anticipated?
That, yes. That's our intent by going back to the drawing board. You know, we have set the overall budget roughly of $20 million for North Cedar and Orchard Hill when we look at the scope of those projects. And the intent is to maximize those dollars to be able to provide the spaces necessary.
Important, that's a promise we made as well, so-
I know.
Important to prove that we are-
We have our work cut out for us.
All the commitments we've made.
We do.
Yes, we do.
But with the work that, again, is important work, it's certainly rewarding because we, again, know it's going to impact students, so.
Yep. All about the kids.
And then am I to understand, based on a couple of things that were said, that it would be against Iowa code for us to vote? No?
We can't just say, well, because again, sometimes you hear these things and there's always a dichotomous viewpoint sometimes, and one of them is, well, don't invest the money into North Cedar. Just take it out of the plan. And the bond specifically states that will be done, and we can't just decide now not to do that. So it's, yes, it's-
I got lost in all the negatives that we can't decide not to do.
I probably, yeah. But yes, so we are not legally able to say we're not going to do work at North Cedar.
I understood that sentence. Okay.
And just to reiterate what Joyce had said, you anticipate we will redress this two weeks, four weeks within?
The hope would be within the next two to four weeks. And again, there's nothing that's firmed up on that. We just have a lot of dialogue we need to continue to do and continue to reflect and look at options, talk to different contractors as well, and then continue to try to figure out the best next steps. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So just so we understand, when you come back the next time and we take it out to bid again, I mean, how extensive can we have kind of vetted this so that we're not looking at another situation for the second rebid that we are now? I mean, is that possible? Is that realistic? I don't know if my question made any sense. I mean, can, how, I mean, how much can you vet the bid before we put it out for bid? So we have a pretty good feeling what we're going to be seeing?
Again, we can work with Andy and Doug and the principals and everyone and just work through what programmatically, what do we need to make this do everything we have said that we're going to do? And there may be different ways to do that, maybe more cost-effective ways. And so we just have to work our way through that.
And I think now, knowing some of the climate and then also the timing and the sequence, I think we have a pretty good understanding of some of the additional costs and premiums that were added on that. So, you know, we, I guess, estimated based on all the different projects across the state that were being bid when we went through the bond process roughly two years ago, because again, those numbers stayed pretty static from the first all elementary bond to the second all elementary bond, prices have changed. So we need to be able to adjust some of those levels of expectations based on some of those price changes that have occurred. And we will do that.
Correct.
Any other questions? All right. And the motion's been read and seconded. And so we will vote, all in favor, signify by saying yes. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item J, the approval of the revised new high school purchase agreement. And Doug sent an update today.
And I've sent out the final-
Final, final.
Well, it's hopefully the final, final to you this afternoon. A little background, as you recall, back in February, the school board did originally approve the purchase agreement for the 50 acres of land from the University of Northern Iowa for the high school site. But that original agreement was subject to approval by the Iowa Board of Regents. And the Iowa Board of Regents has come back to the school district and asked for a couple of changes in the original agreement. And so basically, we've worked with John Larson, our attorney, and we have worked with Michael Hager, who's the CFO at U and I, as well as their attorney, and banged out the changes that the Regents has requested. And basically, what that boils down to is in section four, if you want to pull your document up, 4F, it talks about the timeframe associated with how long that the school district would be able to have before we would either have approval to build a new high school or to start construction on a new high school. And in section 4F, it also talks about what happens 80, 90 years down the road should the school district not need that site anymore for any sort of school building and how the university may have an option to go back and purchase that site back. As far as the nuts and bolts of the cost of the, that's not changed. It's still the same amount that the board agreed to back in February. The closing date has switched slightly. We would now close at the end of August instead of the end of June. Payment schedule is unchanged. All of those items remain unchanged. There's some recitals in the very beginning of the document that sort of talk about the collaborative partnership between the university and the school district as to this opportunity that we have in front of us to construct a new high school with the community's approval and also sort of contact information that the attorney felt was necessary at the end of the agreement. But by and large, it's no changes from a financial perspective from the original agreement. It's just that the Board of Regents requested these changes.
Do I have a motion to approve the purchase agreement?
Whereas the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Directors believes that the purchase of the property under the terms and conditions set forth in the real estate contract is in the best interest of the school district and its students. And whereas the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, desired revisions to the original contract approved by the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education on February 27, 2017. And whereas, after consultation, an agreement on terms and conditions was reached that will positively impact student education and continue the parties' continued collaborative relationship. It is therefore resolved as follows. One- One, to approve the revised real estate contract presented at this meeting between the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, and the Cedar Falls Community School District. Two, that the president and secretary are hereby authorized and directed to execute the real estate contract on behalf of the Board of Directors. Three, after approval and execution of the real estate contract by the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, the superintendent and the administrative team shall proceed with the due diligence process as provided in the real estate contract. And four, the superintendent and the administrative team shall work with the University of Northern Iowa and the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, to take all steps necessary to complete this transaction.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote also. Hearing none.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
And Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Six, yes, one abstain.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Just to remind everybody, I'm abstaining to avoid any potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to approval of the Orchard Hill Playground Bid. Item K on the agenda.
Okay, that would be me. I think we have a slide to show everybody tonight. This is a part of the upcoming Orchard Hill project. Due to, now that things have changed a little bit, it delays things slightly, but most of where the new construction for the Orchard Hill site is going to be, basically means we need to remove most of the playground equipment. A lot of the playground equipment there is old, and it does not meet the new playground standard for equipment. I mean, it's perfectly fine equipment, but if you were to move the equipment, it no longer meets the standard. So we went out, the board approved a couple of meetings ago to go out and solicit bids. We went out and did solicit bids. We asked six different firms to bid on the project. We received one quote, and we have worked with National Playground Compliance in the past. They are a very reputable firm. A significant number of the playgrounds that we have throughout the district have been constructed by National Playground, and we would have no problem recommending acceptance of their project. The project amount of $100,197 is approximately $10,000 less than what the original estimate was from different vendors as we worked through the process. And also would be remiss without saying a special thank you to Orchard Hill Power Parent Group for their contribution of $30,000 towards this playground project. The plan would be, we have to get some cement poured for the sub base for the playground equipment. That probably now won't happen until September at the earliest. It may be a little bit later depending upon when we award contract for Orchard Hill, and then the contractor would install that as soon as that concrete is complete. We would like to see that installation done before October 1st. That allows adequate time for the safety pads that are a part of this project to adhere properly to the concrete that would be underneath the playground equipment.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is there a reason we only one company bid?
I guess it would be the same reason why we only had four companies bid on the last two construction projects. There's a firm in Marshalltown that we have done a lot of work with, and when we contacted them to ask them about why we were disappointed that we did not receive their bid, they basically told us their calendar was full. And we did have contacts from firms as far away as Omaha that were interested in the project, but in the end, they chose not to submit a bid.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the Orchard Hill Playground Equipment Bid for National Playground Compliance Group, Carlisle, Iowa, as presented.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments?
Doug, is that safety padding kind of becoming, I mean, are we kind of having that be standard for most of the?
Yes, with the exception of North Cedar, we're moving towards that. The reason with North Cedar is because some of the playground equipment is in the floodplain, and it becomes very difficult to deal with that when there's water over the top of it. Although, we are checking with the City of Iowa City, they do have that type of padding or safety pad, and under their playground equipment, it occasionally has river water or stream water over the top of it, and our grounds team is working with them to find out how they do that, to disinfect that, and if that turns out to be a positive thing for us, then obviously when we do the North Cedar project, we get to that piece, we would want to do that as well. But it is a standard for us to put the safety pad down.
Is it in place in all of our elementaries or is part of our goal to try and replace it maybe that it's not there yet? We still use wood chips? Is that, is it a goal to try?
We're still using wood chips. Lincoln is a primary example of one elementary that still uses wood chips. Matter of fact, they're going to do an expansion onto the one section of playground equipment. Their parent group is going to do that, and they chose to continue to want to use wood chips because of that area on the west side of the school. But that would not be what we would like to see, but the Lincoln Parent Group, that was what they preferred to go with.
Then do they have the other stuff on the front side of?
On the east side, they have.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought.
On most of it, I don't think on all of it.
And National Playground actually is.
Did that?
Firm that did that.
Okay.
Like I said, we've had very excellent work with them. If you go to Southdale, that's a 50/50. Half of it's National Playground, half of it's a firm out of Marshalltown. Hanson is all National Playground, Cedar Heights, I believe, is all National Playground, so we've had very, very, they're a great team to work with, and they work very closely with the safety, playground safety outfit at UNI as well. And so, well, we're anxious and excited to be able to continue our relationship with them.
I know, in the last month, we have four grandchildren, granddaughters, under the age from eight to one, and we have spent many hours on our playgrounds in Cedar Falls, and we have amazing playgrounds. Very challenging, great for them to just play and pretend, and so we need to feel thankful. And because of our parent groups, that has allowed us to really stay, I don't want to say cutting edge, but stay current with our playgrounds, so we greatly appreciate that.
The parent groups have been absolutely outstanding to work with. They see the advantage of what we're trying to do, and it's been a great partnership between the parent groups and the school district and with working with a combination of upgraded playground equipment and also the districts pitching in for the safety pads underneath to make sure the kids are safe.
Thanks, Doug.
The thought that goes into those recommendations, I mean, it is impressive, those committees who, I mean, they really, they don't just think about playing, they think about a lot of conceptual play.
You just need to go one day when they're out there playing on it because it's something that, as an adult, you're saying, I'm not, I don't know how they do this, and what's the show on TV where they go through the obstacle course? It's a little bit like that, and it's, anyway, it's a lot of fun to watch them play, so. Anyway, if we don't have any further questions or comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the district technology equipment bid. Doug?
I think we have one more slide. There we are. We talked to the board about this when we were going through the PEPL renewal, and we stated that if the district was successful in the renewal of the PEPL, we would want to move forward with some major technology improvements throughout the district. What you see in front of you is a bid that we have sent out for complete replacement of all the network router switches and Wi-Fi transmitters and receivers throughout the entire district. We bid this through E-Rate. We have an opportunity through the E-Rate to be able to receive some pretty significant discounts, and so you can see we did receive six bids that were what I would call qualifying bids. We actually received 10 bids, but there were some bidders that we had to reject because in doing our due diligence, we found out that they, for a varying host of reasons, were not able to sell us the equipment we were asking for because it may not, they may not have been an authorized retailer. They may not have been able to sell the equipment in the state of Iowa or in Blackhawk County. They may have been trying to buy the equipment through another vendor to sell to us, so there was a host of reasons why we couldn't do that. But as you can see, we have four quotes here, and it would be our recommendation to accept the low quote from CDW-G out of Vernon Hills, Illinois, and you can see it's $348,634 after E-Rate discount. And how that will, well, let's go to the second slide first. The second part of this is the unirreproachable power supplies that we need to operate the equipment. I honestly am a firm believer of the fact that we cannot have, we do not have to have electricity, and we do not have to have heat, but by golly, we better keep the internet up. And we actually had a situation at the high school happen a couple of years ago where that exact thing happened. And so we need unirreproachable power supplies to run all this equipment, and again, we had six bidders that met the qualifications, and it would be our recommendation to accept the low quote from Dice Communications out of Omaha. If we go to the last slide, this sort of explains E-Rate, what it's about. It's a part of the universal service fund, and it's administered under the FCC. The program has been used for years for telecommunications or long-distance service. That's going to be discontinued as of the 1st of July. This district has taken advantage of those telecommunications long-distance discounts. We will no longer get those next year, but now they're offering it for equipment upgrades. One of the things, when you get your telephone bill, whether it's your cell phone bill or where you get your landline bill, you'll see a UCC E-Rate amount that you're paying every month. That's where these dollars come from to help us buy this equipment. And then you can see, it's one of the four programs for the fee, as I explained below. Now, how this will work on the discount, we have asked the two vendors that we would pay net discount instead of paying the full amount upfront and then having to wait three to four months before we get the cash back. It's my understanding, we'll get a final answer on that within a few days, but it sounded like it was very favorable. How it has to work is we have filled out a, the equivalent of a preauthorization to order, but they understand it is subject to the board approving it so that they can get their name on the list in the hopper with UCCs for the funding part of it. So if the funding, if they receive the funding for the awarded project within a reasonable period of time, then we'll be able to buy it at net. Otherwise, we'll be paying the full amount and then waiting for the check to come back. This is phase one of a multi-year project that we've got planned. We talked about this when we amended the budget, that we sort of amended one budget up a little bit because we knew we were going to bring this equipment in early. The plan is if the equipment comes in, the IT team will probably be starting as soon as next month in some of the buildings. In another month, you're going to see from us a request for telephone replacement throughout the entire district. That will be a two-year process, and we'll talk about that when we have that bid ready for you, but we should be able to talk to you, we will talk to you about that in May. Same process, it's not E-Rate discountable, there's no E-Rate discount for that, but it is a part of the 10-year master plan, and it looks like it's going to fit within budget.
Thank you.
These are things that most people will never see, but they're necessary to be able to have that robust system for students and all the technology we utilize. Be remiss without saying we could not do the things we do without the dark fiber ring, the connection that CFU provides, and certainly their partnership. So these are things that we need in place to be able to provide that technologically engaging environment that we have.
We're sort of like PEX tubing, not seen, but we better work.
So why is that discount expiring? It's just a government program that's no longer being offered, or?
Well, it's a year-to-year program, and there's been a little bit of rumblings in Washington that it may change, and so we want to be able to take advantage of an opportunity that may not present us in another year. There's no guarantee from year to year.
And the one we know is gone is, you used to be able to have E-Rate for your phone lines, so a phone line that might cost $30 wouldn't be E-Rate eligible, might cost $20 for a school district. So those are the ones that are going to sunset in this upcoming July.
And historically, they calculated the discount based on the school district's free reduced lunch percentage, but in this case, we're going to be receiving a 50% discount, which is significantly greater than what the district has ever received for telecommunications discount. And like I said, we have an opportunity here to really leverage some dollars, and we'd like to take advantage of that.
Okay, thank you.
So this would be a technical question that's above my head to ask, so, but I know that we've been, like, attacked. The server system has been attacked by hackers, you know, kind of testing out our firewall so they can move on to something important like the CIA or FBI. So is this upgrade, does this enhance our protection, or are we doing that through a different service?
Well, we currently, the firewall we have is scheduled to last at least one more year. We recently, when we went through the whole mess, for lack of a better way of describing it, roughly 18 months ago, we had just purchased a new firewall that previous summer, and so that firewall is installed and operating currently. We have a full three-year maintenance contract on that firewall as well, and I would be remiss without saying with our, with the help of our internet partners to make sure that we're going to resolve these problems. So no, we're not, to answer your question directly, no, we're not going to be changing out the firewall, it's everything else up to the firewall, whether it's the wireless radio that would be in the classroom, all the way through the routers and all the way down to the ESC building that ties into the dark fiber that then sends it off.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the data network equipment package number one bid from CDWG Vernon Hills, Illinois, and package number two bid from Dice Communications, Omaha, Nebraska, as presented.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Moving on now to the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of different items. Again, commencement is May 28th, and again, thank you, Susie and Jeff, for volunteering to be on the stage and hand out diplomas. Retirement reception, just a reminder again, is Wednesday, May 31st, 2017, at Pheasant Ridge, and that begins at 4:15 PM. And then at each of your locations, there's just a draft 1718 Board of Education calendar. Just an opportunity to look through that and look at some of those dates that we have down. They're corresponding dates, except really one that I wanted to highlight for everybody, and that is the July 18th date, which would be our first board meeting for the current or the upcoming school calendar year. That is listed on a Tuesday. We typically always meet on a Monday, the third Monday in July, in July, excuse me. However, due to the fact that we're here in City Hall, the third Monday of the month is actually city council meeting, so we want to make sure that, A, that works for everybody, B, it's okay to be able to set that as a potential meeting date because we have work behind the scenes that we need to do and work with Channel 15 and other people. And the thought would be that since that is the first meeting of the new school calendar year, that we would try our pilot program at 5:30 for that meeting and then start that throughout the next calendar year. So again, not an action item, it's more of information. If there's some dates in here that you look at and just say, whoa, those are, I've got a question about that, or other components, please just let me know, and we'll continue to revise it.
Will school elections not move? Didn't they, didn't the legislature vote to move those to same as city elections?
2019 is when that begins, so it doesn't happen for the 2017 election, but it happens for the 2019 election.
Did they keep terms the same? They didn't touch that, correct?
Your terms still, correct. Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.